Welcome. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We're going to learn how the proposed regulations can impact our water. And you're attending the prep rally. Couple of housekeeping things, this webinar is being recorded. And also, as we go through the evening, if you have questions, please put them into the Q and A box. The Q and A box is preferred to the chat for your questions, or if you have suggested talking points, put them in there as well. We can find them easily that way. Also, please introduce yourself in the chat. Say who you are, where you're from, we'd love to know. So tonight, we are having a prep rally to prepare for the Delaware River Basin Commission Draft Fracking Regulations Hearing that are coming up. And these public hearings are coming up, and we'll be talking about them on the 8th and the 15th. And we're presenting this tonight, sharing the information from the Delaware River Frack Ban Coalition Organizing Committee. So, why are we here? Well, the DRBC has published draft regulations pertaining to the import of wastewater produced by fracking and the export of water from the Delaware River watershed for fracking outside the basin. We need a full frac ban. Many of you on the webinar tonight, and of course, all of us in the coalition have been working for that for many years, and we can't accept nothing less. And we're going to talk tonight about why that's absolutely necessary. So the Delaware River Basin Commission are holding virtual hearings. And that's where you can go and make a verbal comment. On December 8th, there's two sessions. That's from 2:30 to 4:30, and 6:30 to 8:30. On December 15th, the next Wednesday, it's from 1:00 to 3:00, and 4:00 to 6:00. Now, please note, you must sign up to speak before 5:00 PM, the day before the hearing. That link there takes you right to the DRBC, a website where you can do that. But also, we're going to be posting in the chat the information for each of the signups for each of these four sessions that they're having on those two days. So they'll be in the chat, and they will also be in the Talking Points Document that we're going to be sharing also in the chat in just a little bit. Would also like to point out that we want as many people as possible to attend these hearings and speak. But if you cannot speak, or you don't want to speak, please go ahead and attend as a witness. Because we want to show the Delaware River Basin Commission that there is broad and deep public interest in this issue. So the more people who have eyes on what the DRBC does, and what people are saying, the better. And also, we're going to be talking at the end about a sign-on letter that we have prepared and are circulating, where we're asking for much more public input in this process. The public process that has been put forward by the Delaware River Basin Commission is insufficient. And we want a just and a democratic process, and we don't have it now. So we have a letter that organizations can sign on to, and we're going to talk about that at the end. But for right now, we also want to point out that written comments can be submitted to the Delaware River Basin Commission right now through February 28th. And that's the close of the public comment period. It was January 28th, our coalition sent a letter in, and they extended it 30 days. But we don't think that's enough in terms of making a fair process, but it has been extended to the original, from the original January 28th to February 28th. And in order to help folks sort out different issues, because it's kind of a thorny proposed rulemaking, we're holding a platform called Watershed Wednesdays. Every Wednesday, we will introduce a different topic addressing the gas regulations in depth. And there'll be an easy way that you can submit that to the Delaware River Basin Commission, and we will share that each Wednesday as well. It'll be focused on the evidence, the science, the facts about why we need a full frac ban. So we will be beginning our Watershed Wednesdays on Wednesday, December 15th. And it will go right through to the last Wednesday in the public comment period, which is February 23rd. We're going to have a community meeting the Monday before December 15th, on the 13th. And I'll talk about that at the end. And that community meeting will be to help us sort of rev up for the Watershed Wednesday program that we'll be starting. So, how did we get here? Well, we got here because of you. This is all of you, right here. And we have been, of course, for the last 10 years, working very hard as a watershed community. Many of you, right here, have been involved in that to stop fracking in the Delaware River watershed. And we worked tirelessly over the last 10 years. And many of us who have been involved in that know there's been lots of ups and downs. But we finally did achieve that. And the Delaware River Basin Commission in February of this year did ban fracking within the Delaware River watershed. However, at that, youhoo! However, at that time, they said they would be proposing regulations that would govern the import of wastewater produced by fracking and the export of Delaware River watershed water for use in fracking outside of the watershed. Now, on October 28th, when the DRBC issued their draft regulations for comment, and they proposed to ban the discharge in these draft rules of wastewater produced by fracking within the watershed, you would not be able to discharge it to water or land. But they did not ban the import of this toxic and radioactive wastewater into the Delaware River watershed, where it could be released into the air directly or into the environment indirectly through various means. And we're going to talk about those means as we go through the points here tonight. But the regulations are riddled with loopholes. And they do not prohibit frac wastewater processing within the watershed, storage within the watershed, or disposal within the watershed. They do not prohibit frac wastewater from entering the watershed. And that's because they allow wastewater produced by fracking to be brought in and handled here. And they're only banning the direct discharge to water or land. So this leaves a gaping hole. And these regulations cannot get around that gaping hole unless they're changed. And what we're asking for is that these regulations should be designed to truly protect our watershed communities from the pollution caused by fracking. Why would we ban fracking and ban the discharge of wastewater from fracking, but not ban all pollution from fracking? It simply doesn't make sense. And we delve into examples of how fracking wastewater can pollute without a discharge in the Talking Points that we're going to be discussing here tonight. So as we move through our topics tonight, I also want to point out that the draft rule does not ban the export of water from the watershed to fuel fracking elsewhere. Allowing watershed water to be taken out will hurt the Delaware Basin because of the depletion of water and stream and river flows, and due to water quality and habitat degradation that happens when you reduce the water in a stream or a river. And it will induce more fracking, more degradation of human health, and more environmental destruction where fracking does occur. More greenhouse gas emissions that drive the global climate catastrophe. This is not only immoral, it's wrong on the part of the Delaware River Basin Commission and what they're supposed to be doing through their water code. So, the first talking point I'm going to cover very quickly before I turn it over to our other speakers. But it is really a summary, a summary about why wastewater produced by fracking must be completely and categorically banned. The pressure is on us. The industry is looking for places to dump its wastewater. The continued trend in the Marcellus Shale to drill super-sized wells has increased the volumes of wastewater produced by each fracked well. And this is increasing the volumes three or four times of wastewater over what fracked wells used to produce. So three or four times the amount of wastewater is now coming out of these wells than used to. So it's created a glut, a glut that the industry is struggling to get rid of. And it has to go somewhere. So where is the industry targeting? They're targeting the Delaware River Basin as a new dumping ground. And with these draft regulations, the DRBC is opening the door for that industry to come in and dump here. The Delaware River watershed's proximity to one of the most productive regions of the Marcellus Shale Play in the northeastern portion of the Susquehanna watershed makes it especially attractive to send it over here. It's a lot closer than injection wells in Ohio, for instance. In the draft regulations, the discharge of fracking wastewater is supposed to be prohibited, which is essential. And there are other systems. Unfortunately, there are other systems that could operate in the watershed, such as waste processing, storage facilities, that could avoid discharging to water and land, but allow emissions to air, which is not regulated by the DRBC. The wastewater could also be stored here, or it could be piped into and out of the watershed without technically discharging to water or land. Or it could be repurposed in what's called beneficial use. You'll hear more about these in detail from our speakers. But these are just some examples of how they can bring this wastewater in without discharging it here and still pollute us and our watershed. So, the pollution from fracking wastewater would be released here. And it would endanger the human health and the environment. It would spread fracking's footprint even further than it reaches today. We don't want to spread fracking anywhere. And we want to end fracking everywhere that it occurs. But we certainly don't want to spread it further than it's already, where it's already destroying the environment and community and human health. The Talking Points linked in the chat, I'm going to put it in there in a minute, go into more detail about the ways these activities can harm our water, our environment, our communities. And our speakers are going to be trying to summarize these in just a few minutes each. But we'll be followed up with questions and answers. And you'll have a chance to make your own suggestions for Talking Points and also ask questions. So after the presentation of the 10 points, we'll have the Q and A. And if you insert your questions as we go along, it'll be most efficient. The agenda that we're going to hear is first from Jeff Tittle, then Karen Faridan, Barbara Arrendale, Eric Weltman, and Eric Benson. And then Karen will moderate the Q and A. But you don't have to keep track of all of this because each speaker, a member of our Delaware River Frack Ban Coalition organizing committee, will introduce themselves as we go along. So I'm going to pass it over now to our first Talking Point. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Jeff Tittle, the retired director of Sierra Club, but an environmental activist, going back even to the days of toxillin on the Delaware River. I'm here today to talk about what we were hoping to be a complete ban and a complete victory, that's not. And when you read the language in the rule, you'll understand that they didn't make mistakes. So it was very deliberate. And they put enough loopholes in there to drive hundreds of tanker trucks through, bringing fracking waste into the region. You know, they can do many different things here, and how they can do them under the gaps that are in the regulatory system. One is that there's an exemption for, under the retro law, under toxic waste for oil and gas byproducts. And since that loophole's in effect, this is not treated as would be as hazardous waste. Two, DRBC does not regulate air, only land and water. And two, most of the states have very weak rules when it comes to dealing with what they call beneficial reuse, which is only beneficial to polluters, not to the environment. And so the different ways that they can sneak millions and millions of gallons of this toxic fracking waste into the basins through one, storage. So New Jersey, for instance, is working on a rule to have underground caverns. That's not a discharge. You can store them in these massive caverns for who knows how long until you're ready to find a place for them. Or you could take an old coal mine and turn that into a cavern too, in Pennsylvania. So, or just put it in tanks and let it sit there for a long time. Two, evaporation. Evaporation can be done in different ways. And what you do is you bring in the fracking waste. And for those who were involved in fighting the Elcon Thermal Oxidation System that they wanted to put in, in Falls Township right across from Trenton, where they could bring in fracking waste and through a very high-heat thermal process, basically turn fracking waste into sludge that can be discharged. But in the meantime, it would release through, basically, a high-heat process, the evaporation or the misting of millions of gallons of toxic waste, plus the storage on site. Another facility in the region is, they have a couple of them, is Senagro. They do a thermal drying system, also using high heat and chemicals to take, they use it mostly for sewage. For those in New Jersey, Ares in Newark is a similar type of facility. And you know, possibly even go there too, where they basically use high heat to dry and evaporate out the water, leaving a sludge. And then the other is just direct wastewater evaporation systems, which many water treatment systems have, and there are a lot of industrial facilities that have them already for wastewater. And what you end up having happening is that this toxic cloud will come up from all that evaporation, and something called air deposition. When it hits the cold air up above, or we have a temperature inversion, or just because it's going to, what goes up will come down, all those chemicals, which conclude everything from traces of uranium and benzene, plus methane and everything else, could end up, heavy metals in particular, could end up back on the ground and washing into our waterways and into our groundwater, but also into our soil and everything else. Another part of this beneficial reuse is the potential for using it for cooling towers. Whether it's for power plants, factories, mills, many of them use potable water, and they replace them with wastewater. For instance, in New Jersey, the Bayway refinery uses 10 million gallons a day of wastewater for its cooling towers. Because even though it's a closed system, because of the high heat of cooling, there's a lot of evaporation. That plant evaporates 10 million gallons a day of water that has to be replaced. A typical power plant will do about 2 million gallons a day. You know, a gas-fired power plant. So, and you get something called chemical drift, which again, is the evaporated chemicals going up into a mist and then coming back down. In many cases, even the manufacturers of cooling towers say that it could impact plant life within a quarter mile to a half mile around the facilities. So when you start eating fracking waste, you realize what a potential impact of having toxic runoff or chemical runoff from that as well. Some other weird things that they also can do with fracking waste is that it's allowed to be used in certain, or I should say wastewater under beneficial reuse, can be used in industrial process, like making cement or using for making bricks and other construction materials. It could be used for sort of non-food agricultural purposes, like the hydroponic system, growing trees. In some places, it can even be used for snowmaking. So, I understand that there are way, even though that may sound like a discharge under the rules because it's considered irrigation, it's not considered industrial discharge. So these are the kinds of loopholes that have to be tightened. But more importantly, when you think about the transportation and the storage of these chemicals, what if these facilities, you know, have a fire or a chemical spill? You know, that can happen. Just the storage alone could create a fire. What if there's a spill or an accident during transportation? So we're playing Russian roulette again with the Delaware River Basin. And so, you know, the governors, some of the governors had said that they were going to ban fracking waste in the basin. And all I can say is that if they really want to ban fracking waste, then they have to ban fracking waste and don't allow it in here for cooling or beneficial reuse or any other use. And part of the problem is, again, states have very weak rules on this. And some states actually encourage the reuse of this water or for cooling and other purposes, and EPA does as well. So we really need for the governors to stand up again and fix these rules and take the frac water out of it. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Jeff. Karen Faridan, I'm the founder of Brooks Gas Truth. And so you just heard about the ways that wastewater can still pose a threat if it's, you know, not discharged. But we're going to take a step back. We're going to talk about transportation into the watershed for processing, storage, reuse, or other purposes, how it threatens the resolute release of dangerous fracking wastewater pollution and something Jeff was just addressing. What happens when there's a spill? What happens when there's an accident? The DRBC can say that they prohibit discharges, but they can't prohibit accidents. Accidents are unpredictable in their nature, but the fact that accidents occur is not at all unpredictable. And so there's a really excellent talking point on that in the documents that you, the document we were shared with in the chat a second ago by Tracy. I would highly recommend that you look over these within the one about Talking Point 5, which is the one that I'm addressing. There are some really important talking points under the bulleted areas. And I wanted to just refer to a couple of them very quickly because the first one refers to EPA report that reports that spills, leaks, and releases of frac wastewater occur, citing a study that says wastewater is one of the top three materials spilled in fracking activities, including during transportation of wastewater. In fact, the harm that occurs may persist for years after a spill. And then that talking point or that bullet point goes on to talk about some of the health effects, which I really encourage you to read over. But then they say that EPA also states that studies show that the likelihood of spills increases as the volume of wastewater and number of trips increase. And Pennsylvania was one of the four states that the researchers of that study looked at. I also wanted to note something else that really needs to be taken into consideration when you're thinking about how they're going to be transporting all of this water. Another consideration is whether or not they're going to be using pipelines to move it all. Does that mean more infrastructure? Does that mean more accidents that we've seen happen with pipelines everywhere? And so there are many adverse impacts that we need to worry about if pipelines are involved. The DRBC has not taken full jurisdiction of pipeline projects in its review of such projects under current regulations, despite the public's insistence that they must. And so I guess the bottom line of all of this one is that right now, tonight, there is a 0% chance that there's going to be a wastewater spill here in the watershed. And it's because it's not permitted here. Why would the DRBC cede that ground? Why would they take away that important protection? And so it's a very important point to make to them that they really have no control over whether it got discharges or going to occur. They can say it's prohibited, but they really can't say that because we know accidents will happen. So thank you very much.
Okay. Hi, I'm Barbara Arrendale, Director of Damascus Citizens for Sustainability, a Delaware River Frack Ban Coalition member organization. I'll be speaking about the hazards related to storage of wastewater produced by fracking, which is not prohibited by the DRBC's draft regulations, and about how the draft regulations allowing export of water for use in fracking elsewhere can deeply harm the Delaware Basin. Remember, there's many more specific details in the Commenting Points Document. First, about storage of wastewater produced by fracking. There are definitions in the draft regulations. Disposal is defined, but import is not. Disposal is also specifically prohibited. Import is allowed. The gas and oil industry has known about the toxicity and cancer and other disease-causing effects of the waste for many decades. A 1950 Shell Development Company paper titled, quote, "Shell: Certain Problems of Environmental Contaminants in the Petroleum Industry," unquote, is very thorough and damning. But the industry ignored the warning, both in relation to workers and communities near their facilities. When in the early 1970s, many protective environmental laws were passed, the oil and gas industry immediately dived in. And by the early 1980s, had gotten its waste removed from the requirements to be tracked, cradled to grave, and disposed of properly by getting an amendment to one of those protective laws that relabeled the waste special. Unfortunately, this is still in effect today. More exemptions to careful oversight were added in the Cheney-Bush 2005 Energy Policy Act. Additionally, it is important to point out that without DRBC banning the import or storage of this waste in the Delaware Basin, the regulation of storage facilities lies with the states. In Pennsylvania, general permit WMGR 123 issued this year with an expiration date of 2031 allows storage that they call temporary. But it can be for years or even for the length of the permit. Unless storage of the waste is banned by banning its import to the Delaware Basin, the tanks that is put in will corrode and leak. The surface impoundments lined with plastic will leak. The trucks or pipes bringing the waste in will leak, spill, or be deliberately dumped, all causing contamination. No entity will be monitoring emissions either. The chemicals and radiation in the waste and their health effects, known even in 1950, are being proposed to be imported, transferred, processed. Will the communities have control or say about facilities? Remember, the DRBC does not have any enforcement capabilities. And these materials have been shown to be persistent in the environment, capable of causing harm over a long time. They do not just disappear. We do not want to see anyone damaged by the oil and gas waste being proposed to be imported into the Delaware Basin. But we also do not see any earthly reason to import poisons into the Delaware Basin just to make a convenient industry disposal area for their waste. Export of water from the Delaware River Basin for fracking elsewhere. Currently, there is a hold on water export for fracking where it is allowed. But these proposed regs will allow this. They say wastewater can be exported, meaning from facilities like municipal storage plants, et cetera. These plants clean the water enough to return it back into the hydrologic system. On the other hand, water used for fracking is so contaminated by what is added to make fracking fluid and what is released from the deep underground that it is no longer water. It is a waste product and cannot be allowed back into any water system as it is toxic and radioactive, and that can never be completely cleaned of contamination. The now potentially four-mile-long horizontal wells use 10 to 20 million gallons of water per well. Where there is not enough water, this level of frac drilling cannot be done. So the drillers are looking for more water to consume. To take water from the Delaware Basin can harm the economics of the basin. If the water is depleted, drinking water quality and quantity can be threatened, harming human health and wildlife in the river. And dependent on it will be endangered. There's no benefit to the 17 million people in the Delaware Basin to allow any export of water to frac elsewhere. It is the DRBC's responsibility to safeguard the watershed's irreplaceable water. And the only way to do this is to completely ban the import of waste and the export of water for fracking. Next, we hear from Eric Weltman in Brooklyn.
Woo! Thank you, Barbara. My name is Eric Weltman, and I'm a Brooklyn-based senior organizer with Food and Water Watch. Food and Water Watch is a proud member of the DRBC Frack Ban Coalition. And we're grateful to the Delaware River Keeper and all of our amazing allies who are helping lead this important fight. My role tonight is to cover two Talking Points, each of which could stand alone as arguments for how and why the draft regulations must be strengthened: climate impacts and the threat of so-called beneficial use of frac waste to our health communities and environment. I want to start, though, by putting my email address in the chat. Please let me know if you have any questions or need more information about the two topics that I'm covering tonight. So here comes my email address. Here's the bottom line. These regulations promote fracking. They help sustain and support it, and that means more climate change. I live, as noted, in New York City, which was devastated by Superstorm Sandy and this summer by Hurricane Ida. Like most of us, I have short stories to share about the destructive impacts of climate change. Please write in the chat and share with us if you have a story that you could share in your testimony to the DRBC about why they must take every possible action to prevent climate change. The regulations give the industry two big things it needs to continue their fracking frenzy in the region, particularly in the Marcellus Shale, Pennsylvania. It gives them another location to get rid of the waste that is choking the fracking industry, and it gives them a source of desperately needed water, water which the industry has not had access due to, due to the longstanding moratorium on water draws for fracking in the basin. It's a rather simple equation, folks. Fracking equals climate change, as explained by Cornell professor Tony Agnafia in an op-ed piece published in 2013 in the New York Times calling gas "not a bridge, but a gangplank to a warmer future." I'm going to pop that in the chat as well. Link to that op-ed piece. So here's a scoop. Natural gas is about 95% methane. Methane leaks or is vented or flared at all stages of the life cycle of natural gas production, distribution, storage, and use. The problem is that methane is 86 times more powerful than carbon. The problem is that methane is 86 times more powerful than carbon at heating the atmosphere on a 20-year time scale, 104 times more powerful than carbon over a 10-year period. Folks, that's more potent than the carbon emissions from coal or oil cradled to grave. So that's just one reason, a very important one, that the DRBC's draft regulations must be strengthened to prevent climate change. It's literally a matter of life and death for our families, our communities, and our environment. Again, please put in the chat if you happen to have a personal story that you think would be worth sharing in your testimony, because those personal notes always lend a lot of credibility and power to testimony. So here's a second reason. The so-called beneficial use of fracking waste threatens our water, our health, our communities, and the environment. In fact, I think we should change the term from beneficial use to baleful or baneful use. Full disclosure, I found those words using a thesaurus. Unfortunately, in its draft regulations, the DRBC proposes to abdicate a key function of its mission to manage the water resources of the Delaware River watershed by not prohibiting the importing of fracking wastewater. Fracking wastewater would only be regulated by a patchwork of state programs regarding so-called beneficial use. DRBC will have no control over the use of fracking wastewater despite the pollution threat from its toxic and radioactive properties. These uses vary from state to state, including for industrial processes, cement manufacturing, boiler feed water, evaporative cooling water, and construction activities. Prohibiting the import of fracking wastewater categorically is the most efficient, economical, and beneficial way to prevent the pollution from fracking wastewater. Thank you very, very, very much.
Great. Welcome, everyone. My name is Eric Benson. I'm on the west side of the Hudson River here in New Jersey, working with Clean Water Action statewide campaigns director. When they say hazardous is not hazardous, the properties of wastewater produced by fracking are not recognized by the government, which allows fracking waste to be handled, transported, and disposed through less restrictive processing systems than would be required for contaminants classified as hazardous waste. Waste from oil and gas mining was renamed "special" in 1980 so that these wastes would not be regulated as the toxic materials that they are, as special wastes. Drilling fluids produced by water, hydraulic fracturing fluids are unregulated toxic substances. Additionally, the change isolated the oil and gas oil companies from the liability they would have had if this waste was regulated as toxic. Because it's labeled as "special," does not mean that it is not toxic. It is toxic and harmful. The liquid waste contains carcinogens, endocrine-disrupting chemicals, heavy metals, poisonous hydrocarbons, radioactive materials, and extremely high salt content. In its study of fracking and drinking water, EPA identified 1,600 chemicals in fracking fluid or drilling wastewater. There's no proven successful treatment for this toxic alphabet soup. The treatment process releases pollution through various pathways. While it is essential that discharges of this fluid to water and land be prohibited, emissions to air can be toxic and damaging to human health and the environment as they are released into surroundings as poisonous, smog-producing air pollution. Just because they say it is hazardous doesn't make it so. The proof is in the dangerous and polluting constituents of frac wastewater that make it, in the real world, hazardous. And then, my second point here: Discharges are not the only way pollution enters our environment and exposes us to harm. Stormwater runoff can carry pollution into our water, spreading far into the environment and stretching impact way into the future. Stormwater runoff carries pollution from sites with no direct discharge that do not require the DRBC review or oversight. This is a pathway of pollution that will be opened wide if the DRBC allows frac wastewater to be imported here for storage, processing, or reuse and other activities. The transfer of pollutants contained in wastewater produced by fracking to the environment can occur through indirect charges that do not trigger the requirement for a national pollution discharge elimination system permit. Long title there. Stormwater runoff can carry into surface water pollutants that are deposited by air on land or vegetation and by spills and leaks onto lands. The construction, operation, and maintenance of fracking water storage projects or processing facility that has no direct discharge to water or land can still expose surface and groundwater, air, fish, and wildlife and people to fracking-related pollution. However, without DRBC permitting, that involves a direct discharge, the project may not be reviewed or monitored by the DRBC. It's important to realize that if a project is not under DRBC jurisdiction, the regulations to the state of the project is where it's located will apply. A major flaw in the current DRBC policy and regulations is that states each have their own stormwater regulations, implementing the Nonpoint Source Pollution Prevention Program based on their own interpretations of the federal Clean Water Act. There's no Unified Stormwater Best Management Practice Manual or regulatory regime to the DRBC level that would ensure strict adherence, for instance, to the Special Protection Waters Program mandate of no measurable change in the outstanding water quality of the anti-degradation waters of the Delaware River Basin Commission. Just one example is looking at Pennsylvania. Does not require an individual to get a stormwater permit for a gas well site. While the DRBC's draft regulations do not apply to gas extraction wells banned in the watershed, the lax regulatory approach to storm runoff from the oil and gas site speaks volumes about Pennsylvania's approach to fracking-related activities. This is what rule should frac wastewater and stormwater runoff pollution potential be allowed to import and handle of its waste here? Stormwater runoff can transfer pollution from fracking wastewater from a closed-loop system, a storage site, or other handling facility that was supposed to be a no-discharge project into a source of contamination. It cannot be tolerated. The DRBC banned fracking within the watershed. Now they must ban the pollution produced by fracking by prohibiting its toxic and radioactive wastewater from entering the watershed, where it may be used, reused, processed, stored, or disposed. I'm gonna turn it over to Karen for questions and answers now.
Um, there's a question that's already in the chat, so I'm gonna go in the Q and A. So I'm gonna go ahead and pick it up. Can you attend as a witness at more than one meeting? Yes. The answer from to Joan Farb's question, she already did sign up to speak, but she wants to know about attending the other meetings. Yes, there's no limit on the number of meetings that you attend. However, the Delaware River Basin Commission does have what you could consider pretty draconian rules about how and when you can actually comment once you've signed up. For instance, if you want to speak, you can only speak at one of these hearings. You can't speak at two of them. Also, you have to sign up, as I mentioned earlier, 24 hours ahead of time. By 5:00 PM the night before, for instance, on Tuesday night, you must sign up if you want to speak on Wednesday. And that's for each one of these hearings on the 8th and the 15th. Also, you have to register in advance. You can't, if you sign up to register just to attend, it's too late at that point. So just remember, if you want to speak, you have to do it ahead of time. And the public hearings are going to be livestreamed on YouTube. And, you know, that's another way you can listen, if that's easier for you to participate and you don't, are not going to be able to speak, or if you just want to speak at one and then listen to all the others. And then each person who wishes to, you know, depending on the number of people who want to speak, each person is going to have about three minutes. I did check with the Delaware River Basin Commission today on this to find out would they be cutting it back to two minutes if, you know, a lot of people spoke or signed up to speak, and they said maybe they might do that. They've done that in the past. So be prepared, if you are going to be speaking, to speak for three minutes. But if you have some highlighted parts in your comment or something that you might want to cut out if they cut it back to two minutes, we don't think it's just to do that. We think it's very important that everybody be given not only their three minutes at these hearings, but we need a lot more hearings. And I put the letter, the sign-on letter for organizations that I mentioned earlier in the chat, because we want to expand this process. But if you look at these two-hour time slots that they've set up for these hearings, that means about 40 people at each hearing at three minutes each. So we hope they don't cut it back to two minutes, but we do want to fill those up. It's very important that we have as many people as possible come out and speak because they need to hear from the public. And sometimes the only way somebody can participate is by actually just off-the-cuff speaking as opposed to sending in a written comment. So please take advantage of this opportunity, and we can show them because they've said, oh, they're gonna wait and see how many people sign up to speak before they decide if they're gonna provide more hearings. Well, we think that's unfair, number one. It's in December. Too many people are very busy with their families and holidays. So this is a very difficult time, and it's not a good measurement of how much people are interested. But in fact, let's take advantage of it. And if we get a lot of people to show up on the 8th and the 15th, then hopefully we'd be able to get more hearings. We're pressing for that.
Yeah. And Tracy, if I, this Eric, if I could just quickly chime in, I put the link again in the chat to the organizational sign-on letter calling for more public participation. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the deadline for signing on to that letter is December 6th. We, please, share this letter with any civic groups, political clubs, community groups, faith institutions, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, garden clubs. We really want to make sure that we have the, you know, the depth and breadth of our community from throughout the region signing on to this letter. So please, you know, sign it if you're representing an organization or share it with others who are. We want to get a lot of, lot of organizations on this letter.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I am gonna give another plug for this at the very end, but thank you for that plug right now.
Somebody had asked about the discharge and the way that this, this, not so much the discharge, pardon me, but the way that the transportation of this waste would be handled. Would they be able to transport it on a river? Would they be able to transport it on a waterway or under in pipelines?
Yes. Yes. There's no limit.
Right.
Yep.
Yes. The answer is yes, and the Coast Guard's the one that's in charge of that. Some people know about this, was that they're dealing with it on the Ohio River. Years ago, they tried to do that nationwide. And the Coast Guard, their definition of where it can be used is any navigable waterway. So we're talking about the entire Delaware River, yes.
Thank you. And a real quick one on Facebook, asked if this recording is going to be shared, where people can find it. So maybe that could go into the chat so people can see it if they look over the Facebook.
Oh, okay, yeah, the Facebook.
Yeah. If they watch the livestream, they'll know where they can go find it after the fact.
Oh, yeah, maybe Peter can stick that in there. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now, turning to the questions that have been asked in the Q and A. Does the PA Green Amendment have any standing with the DRBC?
No, not at this time. The Delaware River Basin Commission is made up of the four states and the federal government, and the governors of the four states and the Army Corps of Engineers, representing President Biden, are the members that vote, and they are under what's called a compact that came out of the Supreme Court decree back in the 1950s. So it's a different animal. It's not a government. They don't have a constitution, for instance.
But I will say, the beneficial or the lack of beneficial reuse on water might be a potential action under the Green Amendment to go after the state that doesn't really, that actually encourages it and doesn't really regulate. So that might be one place where that could happen.
Yeah, it's a good point, because if each of the states in the Delaware River watershed adopt Green Amendments, then we would be in a good position to fight this. Because then the Green Amendment would apply, and we would have environmental rights that we don't have in New Jersey, Delaware, and New York now has just passed the amendment. It hasn't been codified yet. But Pennsylvania's needs to be implemented more fully.
Thanks. Of all the issues presented, which are most likely to influence the DRBC commissioners?
Clean water, I would say. What about others?
I would say that they made a commitment to ban fracking waste in the basin, and they're not living up to it. And it's going to have tremendous impacts on water and on communities. And, you know, air deposition means that you can be breathing it in too. So it's, you know, basically, they have, it's basically, they have a choice. They could keep their word and ban all fracking waste in the basin, or they're gonna have an impact to water, to air, into our lungs, into our soil, and everything else that'll be impacted by the evaporation and stuff.
I just want to, I just want to say that this is the type of thing where the major impact is from the court of public opinion. So the more people that weigh in and make comments and say they want a complete ban, just like the thousands and thousands that said they wanted a ban of fracking in the basin, and it took some years, but eventually that happened.
Hey, I'd like.
So we have to speak up.
Hey, Ken, that's a really good question. I would actually like to turn around and say that the most compelling argument is the one that's most compelling to you all. So in some ways, it would actually, I think, be helpful for us to know what you all think are the most motivating and compelling concerns, so that could inform our own outreach and advocacy. So, you know, again, what's most convincing is what's gonna bring more people, entice more people like you to testify. So it would be helpful, honestly, to get that kind of feedback from the folks, you know, listening, tuning in tonight. What are the issues that matter of all the points we presented tonight? What's most compelling to you?
My snide response is go back and read your own opinion, your own justification for banning fracking in the first place, DRBC. But anyway, moving on to the next question. I know that Connecticut has banned the import of frac waste, and I think Vermont has. What other states have these bans in place?
Well, New York adopted, passed a law on is adopting regulations having to do with frac waste solids, not frac wastewater, where they reclassified it as a hazardous waste. You know, Eric Benson's comment related to the talking point relate, having to do with whether or not it's actually hazardous under federal regulations, was undone by the state of New York by passing that law. Now, it needs to be, I would think it should be expanded to include wastewater. It includes waste solids, but, so that, I would say, even though it's not a ban, it's very important because it can't be disposed of as a benign waste like it is now in all the other states.
Well, yeah, New Jersey doesn't allow the treatment of wastewater, of fracking waste in the state. But again, it doesn't mean they can't bring it in here and store it and do other things with it. But no treatment plant in New Jersey is authorized to treat fracking waste.
And I just wanted to read you the next question. We're kind of getting to the end of the question and answer period, but maybe we can squeeze in these last couple ones we have. How important do you think it is to cite peer-reviewed research and government research and comments? It may be more related to air contaminants, but for instance, the birth outcomes around well pads research is very compelling. And just quickly, before anyone answers, that's one of the great things about the Talking Points document. They are very carefully sourced, so you'll find lots of great things already in there that you can just pluck out, but who wants to address that?
Well, I would just say, one of the things that's very important is to remember when you make your comments that fracking itself is banned in the watershed. So your points should be related to frac wastewater, because that's what the issue is that the draft regulations are addressing. So the air pollution that's released by fracking in Pennsylvania, for instance, is relevant here. If you relate it for the commissioners on a silver platter, like we try to do in the Talking Points, the various handling of frac wastewater that can occur in the watershed under these draft regulations, such as storage, transport into for some other use, processing, cooling tower water, you know, all of the, use it in cement and construction, all the things that we heard about tonight and that are given in much more detail in the Talking Points. construction, all the things that we heard about tonight and that are given in much more detail in the Talking Points. Relate them to that and that will hit the mark with the DRBC on these regulations.
The other point I want to make is chemical drift coming from cooling towers or coming from those evaporation units. You're going to have a chemical mist coming out that will deposit back on the ground through air deposition. And there's plenty of, there's plenty of research on that, as I said earlier. Even the manufacturer of cooling towers say how it will impact, you know, plant life between a quarter and a quarter mile to a half mile around the cooling tower.
That's right. And remember what Eric Benson said, the water that can also, you know, be affected by stormwater runoff. So it's air and stormwater runoff, even though, remember, these regulations prohibit discharge to water or land. So remember to try to walk that line when you're discussing it.
A chemical drift will hit the ground.
That's right. And then it gets in the water, it gets in the people. We only have a couple of minutes left.
There's another thing that there is peer review studies on is the persistence of these materials in rivers. One study showed that six years after discharge was basically stopped in the Allegheny River, there was still a lot of contaminants and radioactivity in the mud in the bottom of the river. So it doesn't just disappear, it stays. And that's a marvelous article, which if it's not in the commenting points, I'll make sure it gets in there. It's a great article.
Thanks, Barbara. I'm going to quickly ask for brief responses to these next questions. Can fracking pollution in the Delaware River shed, pardon me, watershed make its way into well water aquifers along the Delaware River? This person has their well three quarters of a mile away from the Delaware River.
Yes, yes, there's exchange between surface water and groundwater through many parts of the four states and the Delaware River watershed. And as you get down into the coastal plain, it gets very porous, but even in the upper part of the Delaware due to fractures and rock, it can move into aquifers from surface water.
But the chemical drift itself could land right on the land, can land on the land and then soak into the groundwater.
Yes, it can go directly through the soils as well. That's right.
Has the angle of biodiversity been used?
I didn't quite catch that.
Has the angle of biodiversity been used?
Yeah, sure. I think it would be a good thing to bring up. We don't specifically talk about biodiversity in the Talking Points. One of the things that we wanted to emphasize tonight is these Talking Points are a living document. And we would like to have people, if they, you know, want to contribute, we'd like to hear from people about other Talking Points or things that they, for instance, perhaps after they speak at the hearing, they want to share what they said with us. And maybe it can be added to our Talking Points. We will be expanding these Talking Points through Watershed Wednesday, but we also want people to be able to use these Talking Points on the eighth and the fifteenth.
The next one, I think you'll be addressing in your final comments, Tracy. Please put up the address to where letters advocating fracking waste ban in the Delaware watershed can be sent. So you might want to touch on that. Move on quickly, though. Are there two issues here of the use of water from the basin and waste? Yes, export of clean water, import of dirty water. And then finally, I'm sorry to be rushing, but we are kind of running out of time. Are the commissioners under pressure from labor or industry to maintain the status quo and not ban the practices described here?
I think the one word answer is always, so.
At the moment, the status quo is a moratorium. It's essentially a ban. So that would be great to maintain, but that's, you know, the push is to allow import and allow export of water for fracking, but we're not going to let that happen.
No. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. Karen, thank you for moderating. Oh, did you want to wrap up?
No, I was just going to say, I was turning it back to you, but I just wanted to not lose that one question about how to send in your comments.
Yes, I'm going to cover that right now.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Thank you to our speakers and to Karen for moderating. Thank you for everybody for participating. I would just want to say a few things that are important as we go off tonight because we want to be ready for the DRBC hearings and then launch Watershed Wednesdays after that. But as we close tonight, first, thank you. Thank you for taking part. And also for delving into the facts with us. We can fight them with the facts. And they're the ones that are obscuring the truth, not us. We can confront these issues and achieve a full fracking ban, a ban on the import and use of frac wastewater within the Delaware River watershed and a ban on the export of water from the Delaware River watershed. We can do this. We got a ban on fracking and no one thought we could get it. And you guys made it happen with all of us for many years fighting for that. We can do this too. Please sign up to speak at the DRBC hearings. In the chat, I put the links for how to sign up to speak. And you can also go to the DRBC website. They have those same links right there. Also, it's in the Talking Points. And in the Talking Points document, which is a bit.ly link in the chat, get that and it tells you exactly where to send in the written comments and also where to how to sign up for the hearings. You have to, again, remember, sign up the night before, before five PM. They are December eighth, two thirty to four thirty, six thirty to eight thirty, and December fifteenth, the next Wednesday, one to three and four to six. Second thing is we are circulating this sign-on letter. I put a link to the sign-on letter in the chat. It goes to the DRBC and it's saying to them, we must have a substantially expanded public input process. It is currently far too limited. We, we are asking at the end of each of the Talking Points, when people speak at the hearing, to have a common refrain. And you'll see that in the Talking Points and it addresses the, our need for a just, democratic, and inclusive public participation process. Right now, the way it's set up, a lot of people are cut out. We think it's actually intentional, but whether or not it's intentional and whether or not it's just the way bureaucracies always work, we need to have it expanded. So we're asking you to have your organization sign on to that letter by, as Eric said earlier, by next week. So December, Monday, December sixth of this next week is when the letter will be closed down. So we're asking that everybody sign up their organization. So we can tell the governors of New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware and President Biden through the Army Corps of Engineers that we want a full frac ban and we want everybody to have a chance to say that. So look in that chat right now and get the letter and the Google form. Please have your organization sign up, share it with other organizations. Finally, Watershed Wednesdays. This is going to be a great platform. We used this in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen when we fought the really, really bad regulations they put out back then, which would have even allowed fracking in the watershed. And we're using it again. Other, other great efforts over the years, like the effort to ban fracking in New York State also use similar comment platforms where everybody can, over and over again, because there's no limit on how many comments you put into the record. Everybody, over and over again, each Wednesday can pick up a different issue that we give you the details of with lots of good references and submit a comment. And the way we're trying to set this up, starting on December fifteenth, is to make it easy. So there'll be bullet points and then there'll be references that you can delve into more deeply if you want to put a more substantial, longer comment on the record. But as many as we get in there, you know, can never be enough. We want as many as possible because volume is important as is substance. So on Monday, December thirteenth, we're going to have a community meeting on Zoom. It's, it'll be much more formal and won't be a webinar like tonight. And we want to hear from people. We want to hear, have you join that? So we can talk about Watershed Wednesdays and how that platform is going to give a real boost to our effort to get lots and lots of substantive comments about why frac wastewater must be banned categorically from the Delaware River watershed and why no water can be taken from the Delaware River watershed to frac up other places. As we said earlier, it's not only immoral, it's wrong for the DRBC to allow our water in the Delaware River watershed to run other people's lives by allowing it enable and actually induce fracking where it is still allowed today. So we'll be doing this every Wednesday through to the end. February twenty eighth, again, is the close of the comment period. And we want to thank you and say good night from the Delaware River Frac Ban Coalition Organizing Committee, and that's Brooks Gas Truth, Catskill Mountain Keeper, Clean Water Action, Damascus Citizens for Sustainability, Delaware River Keeper Network, Environment New Jersey, Food and Water Watch, Natural Resources Defense Council, Sierra Club, and League of Women Voters of Delaware. And I'm Tracy Carluccio of Delaware River Keeper Network. Thank you for joining us here tonight.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Happy and healthy holidays.